All right, everyone, we're going to call the meeting to order and I'm going to ask you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Molly, can you help me with the roll call, please?
Alderperson Henry, present. Alderperson Barron.
Here.
Alderperson Valdi.
Here.
Alderperson Grimmer.
Here.
Alderperson Kassen.
Present.
Alderperson Iker.
Here.
And Alderperson Dean is excused for the evening. Then we have Administrator Hafner.
Here.
Treasurer Buckman.
Here.
And then Mayor Atwell.
Present. Great, thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to item number four on the agenda, the public hearing. Number one, public hearing, number one, City of Delphio, 2021 redistricting. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear public comment on the proposed redistricting required per the requirements of Wisconsin statute 5.15, 62.08, following the decennial federal census. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the public hearing? Anyone like to speak to the public hearing? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Okay. We need to do anything with two, Molly?
Nope, that was just a link to the documents.
Okay, great. All right, we'll move on to number five, matters of possible closed session. A motion to convene into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Wisconsin statute 19.851G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or likely to become involved, more specifically excessive property assessment claims from Downing Development LTD, Valvoline Instant Oil Change 2325, Sun Valley Drive. So, this is the fun part where we're going to have to ask everyone that's out here to please exit. We will close the doors and go into closed session, and then we will come back into session and we'll invite you all back in when we're done talking to the lawyer.
I move to go into closed session.
Thank you.
Who had the second?
Local.
Okay. And then...
Hi.
Hi, sorry.
Alderperson Henry?
Aye, yes.
Barron?
Aye.
Valdi?
Aye.
Grimmer?
Aye.
Kassen?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
All right. And Iker. And Grimmer had the second?
I'll accept the attorney.
Good evening, everyone.
Okay, we are back into open session. Thank you for your patience during that time.
We have a motion?
I'll make a motion regarding the matter from closed session with Valvoline Instant Oil Change at 2325 Sun Valley Drive that we set the assessment for the year nineteen, or 2019 and 2020 at 1.8 million and that the attorney and the city administrator enter into a settlement agreement with the parties regarding the matter.
Tim won. Alrighty. You got a roll call vote on that one, or just call it?
Just regular.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passes. Alrighty, we'll move on to six. Approval of minutes of November 1st, 2021, regular meeting.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. You got a grim around the abstention.
Oh. No, I did not.
Alright, now we'll move into citizens' comments. Is there anyone that would like to come on up?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Brian Farczy, 852 Sinek Hines Drive, Delafield. I'll be short.
Can you please repeat that address for me?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yep.
852 Sinek Hines Drive. Okay?
And then can you spell your last name, please, sir?
Farczy, F like Frank, A-R-A-C-Y.
Okay. Thank you.
At the last meeting, I mentioned on behalf of the Delafield Arts Foundation that we would be documenting the support for the stage at Liberty Park. And we have done that. I have just shy of 300 signatures here. And some are coming in on a daily basis. I have 206 from the general population, 24 people signed on digitally, and 31 of the downtown businesses signed one of these forms indicating that they support the stage. And these are original, and I will leave them for you if you would like to review them. Shall I do that?
Sure.
Okay. And by the way, my first page here have two, two folks who signed up at our, one of our events. And the first one is Mrs. Pam Berndt, and the second one is Mrs. Amy Apwell.
No pressure on you guys. No pressure on.
Just picking a couple of names.
Just randomly? Alrighty. Who else would like, come on up, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Fran Bills, and I live at 1522 Milwaukee Street here in Delafield.
What was your last name, ma'am?
Bills. B's in boy, I, L, L, S's in Sam.
Thank you.
And I'm here just to support the stage at Liberty Park. You know, I've lived in Delafield for 25 years now at that address, Lake Country for, I don't know, 45. And Delafield is so wonderful, it's so beautiful. We have the lake, Lapham, St. John's, a beautiful county park with a great golf course, et cetera, et cetera. Great restaurants and shops. And I just think the stage, having theater, would be a place for concerts, dramatic productions. What a wonderful thing that would be for our hotels, for lodging, the restaurants, the shops, and people like me. Just, you know, really, I think it would be, Delafield will be the Door County of Lake Country.
Ooh.
Doesn't that sound nice? I think that's a nice ring. And, I don't know, I just think it would be wonderful. And would be so wonderful for our businesses that have suffered, like all businesses, you know, due to the pandemic. It's just we're so lucky that we don't have vacant storefronts downtown and, you know, really. So I just think this would be a wonderful way to, to bring people into the community that want to stay the whole weekend. And it would be great for property values. I would think that that would just, you know, increase the appeal of living here along with everything else that many of you are responsible for, although marvelous bike paths. And I could go on and on, but I won't. But I do hope it's approved. I just think it would be so wonderful. Thank you.
Fran, thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Come on up.
Hi.
Hi.
Lisa, my last name is Z.A.J.C. It's pronounced sights. If I said it, you wouldn't know it. 3309 Lake Drive.
Z.A.J.C.
Yes.
Okay.
3309 Lake Drive. Hi, I'm here in supporting of the dredging as a kayaker. So I've been kayaking on the lake for about three years. This year, I got stuck multiple times right at the mouth of the river. And in just talking to some other people, I was told that you had a report out. And so this picture that's in your report doesn't do it justice. So I was getting stuck outside the area that is, I guess, sanctioned off. And I know it's been on the budget for a while, and I want to encourage you to do that. This is the best time to do it right now. Not only have I been getting stuck, there have been multiple boats that I've seen stuck. And there isn't any way for us to have access out that other way around this island that's basically rowing in the middle. So, you know, for the health of the, of the lake, and really for the safety, because there's been multiple boats that I've seen as well, it, I'm encouraging you to, to consider that this year. So, thank you.
Thank you for the comments. Anyone else? Come on up, sir.
My name is Tom Yoss, Y-O-S-S, 2845 Sylvester Drive, Heartland or Delafield, not sure which yet.
Mailing address is Heartland.
Mailing address is Heartland.
You pay your taxes in the city of Delafield.
There you go. I'm just talking about the dredging also. Basically, I don't think it's fair that the residents have paid for the dredging for years. You don't ask the people surrounding a park to mow the grass or to pay for that. My taxes go to pay for parks and so forth, and I don't use the parks. My taxes pay for schools, and my kids don't go to the schools here. So I think it's fair that, you know, the city budget for the dredging of the, of the lake, it's just, it's gotten worse over the years. And I think it is something that should be budgeted for. I don't think it's fair to make the residents pay for it. So, that's it.
Great. Thanks for the comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other comments? Sir, come on up.
Jim Ellsworth, 2831 Sylvester Drive.
What was the last name, sir?
Ellsworth, E-L-L-S-W-O-R-T-H. And I'm here in favor of the dredging as well. I mean, truly, I've sat at these meetings. I've heard that the lake and is the gem of Delafield, and it needs to be treated as such. We've been in our home since 2017. Actually, it started out as cottage. We tore it down and rebuilt. We have kayaked on the river for at least four years. This was the worst year by far. We two got stuck. This, it's, it's an absolute tragedy if this continues to go on the way it is. I don't know if, you don't do it now when you would do it, but without that, I guarantee you that it's not going to be the crown jewel forever. It needs to be treated as such, and that needs to be dredged. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for the comments. Anyone else? Any other for citizens' comments? Last call, seeing none, citizens' comments are now closed. Alright, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Okay, we'll move on to number nine, board committees and commission reports. Licenses, nothing there, I presume? Nope. Okay, we'll move on to B, planning commission. Mr. Iker?
Alright, we did not have a meeting since our last meeting at the plan commission, but we've got all sorts of fun stuff to deal with here. And it is things that you've heard about in the past. A lot of it is business-related. And start with the first one is the certified survey map to combine two properties for 705 Genesee. And we've talked about the property across the street for quite some time. And all these, someone can correct me if I am wrong, but let's see here. Anything to do with 705, which is our first four motions here, has to do with kind of old business and house cleaning and helping the project move forward. So, I don't know if Administrator Hafner has anything to add on these, but I'll just go through and let you know what they all are. So the first one is certified survey map to combine the two properties, because they are two separate properties that are going to be functioning as one. And then we've got the developers' agreement. And then we have the emergency access easement agreement based on some changes in their architecture that they need to do based on some things that didn't make sense financially, based on where we'd have access to the property, should there be a fire with heavy equipment. And then there's a stormwater management maintenance agreement that is part and parcel of any new development.
Just one correction there, to the structure, not to the architecture.
That is true, yes. So, yeah, so there's no change, there's no change in, it's not going to be, there's no change to the approved looks of the building. There's something about a span of concrete and that they need, that they would need to do to create a space for the fire trucks to go between the two buildings that became very cumbersome and cost prohibitive. And so they decided to do something else. It didn't change much at all, or didn't change anything about the.
Nothing about the architecture.
Layout of the building. It's just where they get access. So, I mean, we can step through these, but I'll let Mr. Hafner add anything that he thinks I might have glossed over, if anything.
No, I think that really covers it. The developers' agreement fairly closely follows our standard template. Nothing real special with regards to that. And like was stated, designing the parking lot deck to provide structural support of the fire apparatus became cost prohibitive for the developer, as well as the depth of the beam in the underground parking would have been such that vehicles couldn't have passed underneath the beam. And so as an alternative, we identified that the fire equipment could service, specifically the ladder truck could service the buildings from the property to the north off of Milwaukee Street. And so we did assign a emergency access easement to that property. It's currently owned by Hendrick's, so they own both properties. But in the event they would sell that property in the future, the easement would preserve that emergency access area to service the buildings at 705.
So with, unless there, unless there's questions, I'll step through and I'll just make the recommend, I'll make the motions if anyone, unless anyone objects, which you're welcome to do. But I'll make a motion for item B2A for approval of the certified survey map to combine two properties for the 705 parcel. I'll second it.
Alrighty. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes.
I'll make a motion for item B2B for a developers' agreement as listed in our packet for 705 Genesee Street.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes.
I'll make a motion for our emergency access easement on 524 Milwaukee Street for the 705 Genesee Street property.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Passes.
I'll make a motion for the stormwater management maintenance agreement for 705 Genesee Street.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes.
Alright, I'm sorry to make that sound mundane. It's actually very exciting. They're going to start working on this.
They were serving today.
Yeah. Okay, and so item E, Hawthorne Farm Properties, this is just their, so as you know, these, all these plats were sold. And this was just the final step to approve the final plat to accommodate their, their subdivision, to make it all official, that people start buying and moving in. So there's nothing new here, other than there's a formality in house cleaning as well. So I'll make a motion for that item, for the final plats for the Hawthorne Farm development.
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes.
And similarly, they have, if it's in our packet, but they've got a declaration of restrictions and covenants for the properties, which if you read them, they're very standard for some of the subdivisions like Carriage Hills and others around our neighborhood. Helps keep nice properties and good visuals. So I'll make a motion for the approval of their declaration of restrictions and covenants for the Hawthorne Farms property.
I'll second.
Tom, you're good with all that?
We are, as staff, yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes.
Alright, and then we have, how are we in, so this is open space management plan. I believe that's, this isn't new news, is it?
Nope.
It's all the same, same thing with the trails and access to the property and how we get there. So I'll make a motion to approve the Hawthorne Farm Open Space Management Plan.
I'll second.
Oh.
We have a.
Phil won it. Phil won it.
I'm good.
Alrighty, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Maybe his voice carried.
And I'll also make a motion for the Hawthorne Farms Stormwater Maintenance Agreement. And I'll just note on this that, I don't know that they needed any prompting, but I'm a big fan of like non-rectangular and square stormwater management ponds. And they kind of, they have some ones that are out there that are contoured very nicely to fit in, look like, not natural, but close. So I'll make a motion for the stormwater maintenance agreement.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes.
Alright, with that, we do have a plan commission meeting at the end of, or actually next week.
What?
On the 17th. No, this week.
This week.
Two days, two days away.
Wednesday.
Oh my gosh. So please look at the agenda for that. We've got some fun stuff. We're talking about possible code amendments to accommodate an indoor shooting range, and also Seven Seas property, and what else we have, I don't know, look at the, look at the agenda. We've got some good stuff going on. It's all, looks positive for the city.
Exciting.
With that, look it up. And if you have any questions, show up at the meeting.
And I gave you guys a heads up two or three months ago, the planning commission is going to be busy, and they're going to be busy. There'll be lots of stuff on the agenda for the next three to six months.
Yeah, we are working through all the economic development committee's recommendations over the next, into, going into first quarter. So, yeah, keep, keep in tune.
Alright, we'll move on to C, Lake Welfare Committee.
Thank you. First to note, the, the link to the agenda that's in tonight's overall agenda, the link to the Lake Welfare Committee meeting is from October, so that one would need to be corrected to last week's meeting. I don't know if those minutes are actually available yet. The meeting did not really have any things of note, other than just reviewing, again, the sewer pack plan, trying to discuss what steps to take from that plan.
Alright. Sounds good. Thank you. We'll move on to D, Park and Recreation Commission, Tree Board. Mr. Grimmer?
No report on Tree Board. Park and Rec had a 1026 meeting, which I don't think I reported on, advised on trails, established reporting for the Friends of the Bark River. So there's more formal reporting to Park and Rec about their plans ahead of time, instead of maybe after the fact, or maybe reporting to some and not others. And then the third thing is Park and Rec is developing a policy or starting to discuss how to deal with memorials. We often get requests from individuals to plant trees or name, name a building after someone, or so on and so forth. Or they go ahead and plant a tree and put up a plaque without our knowledge. So we're there to kind of develop some guidelines with that.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Alright, we'll move on to E, Public Works Committee. Mr. Berndt?
So we're to the point where we approved the, the bicycle path and pedestrian facilities implementation plan, and we're recommending it to council. So I guess I'm going to make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
And this has been discussed over the last year. And we had, we did have a meeting with public comment, and we, I guess most of the people that's. with public comment, and I guess most of the people that supported this thing showed up, and we didn't have as much opposition as I thought. If you look at the map, it's a fairly obvious map that we're trying to get something going around the lake on the main roads. And the other paths that are secondary in there are drawn through open space that will eventually be subdivisions. And as I've pointed out, those are not exact line drawings, and it's noted that way. It's just that we want the connectivity when those areas are developed. So it is a living document, hopefully something that, you know, if we feel we need to change, we can change it. But now at least the Plan Commission, the Park and Rec Commission, and the Public Works Committee are operating off the same piece of paper. And I think you see that now in the projection of the capital budget that's starting to follow that plan. And it would not surprise me if we moved some projects around even in a year or two, depending on costs and access to property. So I recommend that we approve it.
All right. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes.
So other business, we have a constituent down on Cushing Park Road concerned about the parking that people are using the street to access the park. And any of us who've driven down there can see what's going on. And specifically, his driveway is being obstructed. So the traffic committee met and recommended that we post no parking on either side of that driveway. And actually, the Public Works Committee expanded it to, the motion is to post 75 feet on each side of Mr. Peterson's driveway as no parking zone. And that will be my motion.
And I'll second it.
Jim, could you include adoption of a revised city traffic map in your motion?
I can. Will you?
I'll second that.
And that's how, that's how we, we look at the map.
Got that, Molly?
Uh huh.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Great. Thank you very much.
Well, then there's, the other thing that, there was some public comment on the island that's created in the roundabout on Gulf Road, and we've had concern about the grasses growing too high. And so we have, it's not for the council, but the committee has made a motion to have DPW cut some of them down so it fits the vision guidelines.
So that area by the, just to the north of the sidewalk of the roundabout.
Yes. And specifically, I've noticed it coming from the east, looking towards where you'd come out of Chick-fil-A and Holiday Inn there, that the grasses obstruct your view of the people coming around. Now, I will add, I didn't bring this up at the meeting. I was in Madison the other day, and they have roundabouts, so I had extra time. And so I looked at some of them, and they have the same grasses that we have, but they have planted different material in those areas. So I don't know, I'm not blaming anyone for this, but there are other areas that are addressing this issue, and they're doing it up front, where we're creating these areas that I like the fact that they're landscaped, and they're not just weeds like the DOT area. But when we do it again in the future, we need to think about the height of some of those growth, those plantings. But in Madison, they are actively planting to accommodate the vision corners. So, but in the meantime, we're going to cut the grasses that are there, and at some point, maybe something else will be planted. Or there's some speculation they might even stay down once you cut them. So that's all.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to F, Delahart. Anything, Mr. Iker?
No, we do have a meeting tomorrow, and that's to set any kind of a finalization to our budget for wages and that going into next year. That's about it.
Okay, great. We'll go on to G, Police Commission. Mr. Kason?
No meeting, no minutes.
Sounds good. Each Library Board.
We actually did not meet last Tuesday as we normally do or ordinarily do. We are going to meet tomorrow, so I have no meeting and no report.
Got it. All right. I, Zoning Board of Appeals, I assume no meeting?
Correct.
And J, Promotion and Tourism Commission. Mr. Barron?
Well, we had a meeting, and we had a presentation by the folks that are building a new lodge out at Lappin Peak State Park. And it's, it's a private effort to fund and build this lodge to the tune of about $1.8 million. And it's going to serve as an entry point and a warming house, a changing place, a gathering place. And they've already raised a portion of that money, and they approached the Delafield Tourism to participate in something like that. And we will consider that in the future, as we're considering, you know, the costs and running the stage someday. So, but we did meet on that, and they've asked us for a contribution, and we will think about that in future years.
Where are they building in the parking lot?
Right at the parking lot.
Oh, where that existing building is?
Well, the existing building will be, that's to the south. This is going to be more to the east. It's going to be about 4,000 square feet. It's a large, it's a good-sized building, and may even, even, there may be some events that take place there. So it's one of these things that probably is going to attract people for our hotels, which is always the key to the committee.
Right.
So there is some nexus to it. So we, we were happy to.
Going to be to the east of that parking lot?
Yes, yes.
Right in front of the entrance counted to the trails?
Right. So it'll have a wall of windows that looks out over to the east, over the trails, and it looks a bit like a ski lodge. But it's going to be completely privately funded, and then donated to the DNR. But they're even having a trust fund for maintenance and things like that.
Cool.
Anyway, we just received that presentation. Our hotel representative has advised us that they have been busier and busier with weddings. They're mostly full on the weekends. So things are really coming back. I don't know if you noticed that the Delafield Hotel is rated as one of the top 10 hotels in the Midwest in various publications recently. So there's some good news out of that. They did vote to fund the rest of the trail money, $53,400. And there was 30 in the budget, because our funds have recovered. And it will be on the agenda in the first quarter about funding the next money, or I guess refunding the money they hadn't paid in the past, which is $92,000. And we're just waiting to see what our revenues look like in the fourth quarter. But at this point, you know, we're guardedly saying we're kind of out of the COVID thing. And we're operating on a thinner budget. And so we're going to try and stick with our commitments to the city.
Wonderful.
So that's all.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to Lake Country Fire and Rescue Commission. Any report?
Two items. The board is currently debating how to allocate the surplus funds from 2020 operations of the original three members, whether those funds should be distributed back to the original communities, or stay within Lake Country Fire and Rescue's department. And that is an ongoing discussion and debate.
Which, I'm sorry, Matt, which funds?
The surplus funds from revenues from 2020.
What was the amount on that? Was that 40?
The city's amount is, I'd have to check.
Okay. It might be worth just noting that when the first three entities, Neshoda, Shenicoe, and Delafield went into the joint agreement, that there was a, it was kind of like a founder's fee, $100,000 that was all chipped. At least that was our portion that was like, kind of seed money, just went in. So if that's worth noting, I think it's worth noting for anyone thinking that, well, this wasn't part of the agreement as you're signing up as a new entity, it might be worth bringing up.
Yep. For the most part, we're bound by the intermunicipal agreement.
I think we signed it.
We did sign. And I know several attorneys, board attorneys, Attorney Macy and Attorney Hamis are reviewing the document and presenting options.
I don't compete with those two, so I'll let them work it out. Just food for thought.
And Tom, that payback was included in the upcoming budget, correct? The anticipated amount that we got last year is again anticipated?
Yeah, which one represent the full amount? So the full amount of fund balance was, is about $218,000, of which, you know, the city was 73, 74% owner of former LCFR. But based on advice from Chief Fenig, the amount included in this year's budget was the same as last year's, which was just over $60,000. And that's consistent with a recommendation that Chief Fenig made to the Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board on distributions of funds for next year.
All right. Thank you.
The second point that I will bring up is Lake Country and Fire and Rescue has increased operating revenue, but we also have increased expenses. I would not anticipate a surplus as we have seen in the past with the new organization. I would anticipate that our, that our, our expenses may exceed our revenue for this year. However, there's no intention to come back to the municipalities for any adjustments, any money. If it is going to happen, it's going to be very close, and we do retain a contingency fund. But all billing is delayed, reimbursement is delayed, so we really never know how it kind of shakes out. But we have been busy. I know Chief Fenig was here a couple months ago, giving everyone the update on Lake Country Fire and Rescue and the challenges and the opportunities. And I know he has shared response times, mostly on the east side of the lake have really decreased considerably, I mean substantially, upwards of one to two minutes, I believe. And that's all due to consolidation. Our next meeting is December 4th.
Great. Thank you very much. Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board, I don't, well, you didn't, nothing for the commission?
And that was for the board.
Yes.
Got it. Okay, we'll move on to M, Other Committees, Commissions, and Boards, and we'll do Deer Management Committee. Henry.
Yeah, we met last Monday, and just a little update, we have had, as of Monday, 13 deer have been harvested in Delafield, and we have over 100 hunters now registered with our program. So that's good. We're hoping to see more deer taken. We did approve an incentive program for every 15 deer that are taken. We are going to do a random drawing of those people who have registered for a $100 gift card to the Sausage House Meats and Deli for deer processing, to try to encourage more people to report the deer that have been taken from Delafield. So the more deer you take, the more chances you have to get those. And it is capped at $1,000 total for the year.
Cool.
So. Who doesn't love sausage?
Right.
Great. Thank you much. Okay, we'll move on to 10, Unfinished Business. We have none. Mayor's Report. Just wanted to briefly remind you that 705 Genesee Street construction could start anytime. I think Mr. Barron mentioned he saw the surveyors out there. I would anticipate the fencing going up rather quickly here. We have, I have met with the Hendrix Group as well as the Chamber, and starting to facilitate those communications as they affect the businesses and the Chamber's events and things like that. And we're working very closely together on those. And I think it's going to go pretty smoothly as far as communication part of it. And obviously, there's going to be challenges during construction. This process is going to be a minimum of 12 months. We're going to have concerns from citizens and from businesses. And the Chamber and the mayor have encouraged Hendrix to set up a website with schedules, as well as an email address for contact for questions where they can get responses. And Hendrix said that that's something they'd be willing to do.
That would be great, if we could, like council members, get little blurbs, that would be helpful. I mean, we can check it, but if there's something proactively, I've been getting a lot of questions, so I know it'd be lovely.
We're trying to get ahead of that curve, right? Trying really hard.
Speaking of getting ahead of the curve, there's a lot of cars that are parked on that property currently for different events, or just on Saturdays, whatever. Those are, I assume, just people probably in the downtown area? Is there a, or going over to Revere's or something? And that's going to be a lot of cars that are displaced, so.
So let me just check something here with Molly. Are we allowed to discuss during the mayor's report here, or am I just allowed to mention things and we have to move on?
No discussion or action shall take place by members of the council unless otherwise listed.
We can't really discuss it.
Okay.
You can find somewhere else on the agenda, bring it up.
Okay.
Do it. All righty, we'll move on to New Business. 12A, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding the Adjustment to Increase the City's 2022 Allowable Levy Limit per 66.06023FM. Wisconsin State Statutes for the Carry Forward of Prior Year's Unused Levy in the Amount of $34,469 per Section 66.06023FM3. Wisconsin Statute, the two-thirds majority vote of the governing bodies requires a minimum of five affirmative votes for approval, regardless of the number of council members in attendance and voting. Tom?
Yeah, as we discussed at the budget workshop, there is some unused levy carry forward from prior year that we're allowed to utilize. It does require the two-thirds majority vote of the common council, and that's, the common council as an entirety, regardless of how many are in attendance and vote. So we do need five, a minimum of five affirmative votes for, to enable us to use that additional levy limit.
Well, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right, is there any discussion?
I'll say it doesn't come as any surprise. I mean, we kind of knew where we are, and we discussed this in our budget meeting.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. All right, we'll move on to 12B, Discussion of Possible Action to Utilize $197,196 of the City's 788,782 Allocation of American Rescue Plan Act Funds for the Purpose of Replacing Lost Revenue Due to the Pandemic and Using It in Support of the 2022 Budget to Provide Government Services to the Extent of the Reduction in Revenue, More Specifically for Police Department Wages and Salaries to Provide Public Safety Services.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. All right, we'll move on to C, Discussion of Possible Action on the Proposed 2022 City at Delafield Operating and Capital Budgets.
I'll just say in the past, you know, we've always made separate motions specific to the operating budget and the capital budget. We've, different years sometimes started with the operating, other years started with the capital, and it would really be based on the council's preference where we start.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the operating budget as proposed.
Second.
Second.
Is there discussion?
I would like to discuss it. Yeah, the one change I would have is for the deer management expenses. That has gone from $5,000 to a proposed $1,000, and I think a lot of that was this past year, or last year, there just wasn't as much done with the deer management, and this year, we have a much more active deer management committee trying to really do some work. So, I'd like to maybe propose that be amended to $3,000, just so it gives us some room to work with, and maybe continue to do some things.
Is that a motion?
I would move that that be changed to $3,000.
$3,000?
$3,000.
$2,000, okay.
Because right now, it's $1,000, and we move that that be changed to $3,000.
I'll back that, I'll second.
So, how does that impact, you know, I know we have everything under limits and things like that.
Well, you know, Jim, as you mentioned before, and as is noted in Finance Officer Bookman's memo in the packet, very generously, the Tourism Commission did make a motion to give the city an additional, I think it was about $53,000, in contribution towards Trail Debt Service, so that they're, now with the original $30,000, they're going to be fully funding the Trail Debt Service for next year. And what that does is it frees up some money that we were going to use for our debt service levy, and makes it available for operating levy. And if we, ideally, if we don't use much of it, or any of it, it then becomes less of a reduction in our fund balance than we were originally discussing. So, we were originally proposing a fund balance utilization of, I think it was about $97,000 or something like that, and with this $50,000 contribution, brings us down to only using a fund balance contribution now of $40-some thousand dollars.
So, the two grand, for $2,000, we could fit it in?
Correct.
Do we want to, can we take a vote on the change of $2,500, or $2,000, and then go to the second motion?
So, what the council's done in the past is they'd made one grand motion regarding the budget as a whole, like Jim did, and then left it open for individual amendments. Then each of the, each of the individual amendments are then voted on before a final motion on the budget as a whole.
Okay.
Gotcha.
So, we'll vote on Jim's motion, and then we'll go back to Danielle.
No, we vote on the amendment.
He voted on the amendment.
Oh, the amendment first? Oh, gotcha.
Mine remains to the end.
Correct.
So, question, what's the difference between $1,000, and $5,000, and $3,000? Where's the money go?
There's a lot of things that we're trying to explore, different options, like the incentive program that we just did for $1,000. Hopefully, we would get that many deer. There's also still the possibility of hiring sharpshooters if we need to, so we just want to have those funds available for whatever. If we don't use them, great, but we would like to be able to have the option too. We also approved to purchase some deer stands and things like that, that's what the money's going to. So, any way that we can help reduce the herd would be very helpful, but we're trying to explore different options of how we can go about doing that, and it helps if we have a budget to be able to implement any of those things that come up. If we can figure out how to do that, it would help to have a budget to do that.
And I would say, given their, you know, history, they haven't been a use it or lose it type committee, and if they don't need it, they don't use it.
Yeah.
All right, is there any other discussion? We have a first and a second. All in favor for the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Any other amendments?
So, now do you need an amendment to modify the budget based on the parks, or the Tourism Commission money?
Yes.
So, I'll make a motion, since I have the number here. I had it.
It's never there when you're looking for it.
I know. Okay, so, I'll make a motion to accept the $53,407.21 from the Tourism Commission, and that is to be used to offset the amount that we had stated we were going to use from the fund balance, reducing that by the $2,000 that was just committed to the deer committee.
And any other changes that are made?
And any other changes that are made subsequent to this motion.
I'll second.
Good, Molly?
I think I got the gist of it.
You good for me to take them?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes.
I just have a question while we're talking about budget. What did, where did we end up with as far as salaries for the summer harvesting and DPW help?
Yeah, so in your packet, there's a, see on pages 171 and 172 of your packet, there's a summary of, well, first, let me say that the proposed budget included a $13 an hour starting wage for seasonal employees. It was discussed at the budget workshop to potentially increase that to $15. So, in your packet, we show what the net effect would be of increasing it to $14, $14.50, and $15. And under the $15 scenario, it'd increase general fund spending by $10,220.43, and also increase utility spending by an additional $755.75.
Sorry, Tom, for which dollar amount was that?
That's for the $15 an hour scenario.
Well, I would make a motion to adjust the seasonal rate to $15 an hour.
Oh, I'll second that.
All right, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes.
Amy, do we need a motion for the $1 modification of the levy limit based on minor changes since the budget workshop?
$1?
Yeah. It was a...
Rounding?
There was a $1 decrease and a $2 increase.
Yeah. I don't think so.
We could use a motion for a $1 increase in the levy limit based on minor changes since the proposed budget.
Can't be any more minor.
Is that, they're just related to the operating budget, or should that be at the end when we're already approved everything?
It's for the operating budget.
It's just for the operating, okay.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we can approve the levy limit, I guess add a dollar to the levy limit calculation.
Based on minor changes that occurred?
Based on minor changes in the...
Want to second it?
Computations.
Good?
Yep.
If you're interested, those two changes are documented in Amy's memo to you.
All righty, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes.
Any other amendments to the operating budget?
Okay.
That's tough.
I did have one, I'm sorry, I had one other question, related to the ice rink. Was that being moved to closer to downtown now?
The Park and Rec Commission did move to move the ice rink from Oakwood Park to the Fish hatchery sports complex.
Does that change the operating budget for that? I mean, I believe that was part of the discussion with that, was that it would reduce the...
It doesn't change the operating budget at all. What it does is, you know, we're still going to have the same amount of DPW employees, but it will save them some time and frees up some of their time to do other things.
Okay.
It saves them time because of, mainly because of travel, the proximity of the ice rink to the DPW facility.
Thank you.
All right, do we want to, I'm forgetting, do we need to vote on Jim's motion, or move on to the capital budget?
My motion.
Okay. All right. Can you repeat Jim's motion?
So, Jim recommended approving the operating budget as proposed, so I would think you would need to amend your motion.
Well, we amended it already, these few amendments. I mean, if you want me to move again, then I has amended.
Yeah.
Okay, I will move the approval of the operating budget as proposed and as amended tonight.
Jackie, you good with that?
I am, I have seconded it the last time.
Oh, you have?
Yeah.
Oh.
That's right.
A lot of motions.
I thought I had Grimmer on there.
Oh, yeah, Grimmer? Oh, sorry, wrong one. My bad.
I just feel my thumb.
Okay, so we're going with Baron and Grimmer.
Okay.
All righty, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. On to Cap.
Okay, I don't know about anybody else, but I'm, did you want to start? Do we want to go, like, linearly, or?
With the, are we discussing it first, or do we need a motion first to approve it?
I think we're going to go through bit by bit.
Are you?
Oh, yeah. Well, no, not bit by bit, but there are a couple of things I would like to...
I'll put a motion on the table to approve the capital budget.
I'll second.
Now?
Now it's subject to amendments.
Do you want to start us off, what you wanted to talk about?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm doing it right.
Oh, you're doing it right.
All right. I would like to make a motion to remove the pier in St. John's Bay from the capital budget. I can give a number of reasons for the removal. It has not been supported by any of the homeowners who live on St. John's Bay, it's been strongly disapproved. Our own police department is not in support because of patrolling the dock and the fact that the pier is interfering. It's a safety issue. It was not recommended by the Parks and Rec, and I was on the Della Field Economic Development Committee, and it did not make their recommendation. Further, I've been in communication with the DNR starting in the spring because of my concerns about the health of the bay, the depth of the lake, the delicate nature of the plant life, and there are a number of folks from the DNR who do not think it ought to be there. One in particular is a water management specialist regarding habitat and outdoor recreation, Luke Roffler. His name will come up again in a moment. Heidi Bunk, she's well-known around here, she's a lake biologist, has studied Naga Wica for a long time, and she has concluded that a placement of a pier, this is a quote from an email from Heidi, for boats to stop, dock, and go downtown would be very difficult in the location. I won't read the entire email, it's rather long, but she said that boats coming constantly in and out of that location would not only disturb the localized area, but would disrupt the health of the bay as a whole. A freshwater fish expert from the DNR, Benjamin Husner, also is dubious about the nature, mostly because it is the last spawning ground for northern pike that exist in the bay. There seem to be far more, if I were to put, you know, like, pros and cons about something like this, the negatives far, far outweigh the positives. The one thing we did not do as a city is we did not involve the Bay Area tax-paying citizens who live on the lake, not at all in the discussion. They are strongly against it. More curiously, on July 21st, Luke Roffler from the DNR emailed our city, Mayor Atwell and Tom included, and told everybody that there needs to be an application because of all the likelihood of, and I quote, "significant adverse impact to the resources present in the bay." As of Friday morning, there has been no application submitted from the city. In lieu of that, I think it's not a lot of money, and I move to remove it.
So, is there, that's a motion? Do you, what do you have down for a motion?
So, I just have a motion to remove the pier.
How much is?
$30,000.
The pier is budget for $60,000 with the $30,000...
That's DNR grant, so I move to remove the $60,000 from the budget.
I'll second that motion.
Well, I'd comment that the DNR that objects to it has every say in the world if they decline our $30,000 matching fund, which would be coming from them, right? Isn't it a DNR matching grant?
It is, but it's a recreational boating facility group that the grant comes from that highly encourages improvements like this. So, DNR is kind of...
Different hands?
From the boating facilities, they like a project like this, and other environmental portions of the DNR isn't as thrilled about projects like this.
I'm perfectly willing to throw it over the wall to DNR and let their schizophrenic personality work it out, and decide if they don't think it's a good idea inside their own organization, I don't know why we should suffer the fact that we can't, we don't have a destination for people on the lake to come to downtown, and it's a huge...
Yeah, we do, we have roads, Tim. This is...
No, boats, I'm talking boats. So, we've got people, the DNR is putting 4,000 boats on our lake every year on their launch, and the downtown businesses do not get a benefit from that, other than the fact that they're stirring up the lake, and there's traffic on the roads that don't go to their businesses because they're trailering boats, and we don't allow trailer parking in the city. If we allow six boats to come downtown, we get a little back, and we also get, like I said, it's, we're unique in the fact we're one of the few lakes around in Lake Country that don't have a destination place for people.
So, you're okay to destroy the habitat itself, you're okay to destroy the health of the bay, and you're okay to destroy the health of that ecosystem for five or six pleasure boats, five or six months out of the year, you're good with that?
That's an odd translation of what I said, but the...
Not at all. I mean, I'm an environmental, I have a degree in environmental science, so maybe I take a very different view, but I would like to point out that there are several people who are experts in the field who believe very strongly that this is a very bad idea. And Mr. Roffler did ask that I notify them if we're going to intend to proceed with the construction of a pier without a permit, because it's, you know, if we like litigation, I guess we can do it, because I guarantee the bay residents are not happy about it.
Well, like I said, the DNR would be half share in the project, and I'm an avid fisherman, I was out here as a little kid, I mean, before I could, I could walk, I could talk before I could walk, so I was going to say before I could talk. But I've been fishing this area forever, and certain lakes have improved, certain lakes haven't, but the, I don't see a risk personally.
It's not about...
And six boat slips.
But that, Tim, that's why we have experts. That's why we have experts, because you don't see what you don't know. And we're going right into destroying, didn't you talk about that last meeting, Danielle, about preserving this gem of a lake and trying to take care of it and maintaining the property values for all the people who pay a whole lot more taxes, and yet somehow it's okay in the bay?
I can't possibly see how five, six slips could destroy habitat in that area.
Have you been behind a boat in the mock?
I have, absolutely, absolutely. I, we're on the lake as well, and I see them going through, it does not, I do not see how that could possibly destroy habitat with having six slips on that area.
Okay, so, I, you know, I understand that... Okay, so I, you know, I understand that you don't see, but you don't have the expertise, which is why I contacted people who did. And yet that's being discounted because of anecdotal, I don't see it, it must not be a problem.
Well, that's, to suggest that that area is so far, I mean, we have boats going through there all the time.
No, we don't.
There are boats going down there. There are boats going through that area. I mean, even on Fourth of July, we have hundreds of boats going through that area. And you're telling me five boats going through there, maybe on a daily basis, is gonna destroy a habitat? I think that's kind of absurd.
Very interesting perspective. I know that these experts probably don't know as much as you do and that you're far wiser than they are. But I would submit that the exhaustive studies some of these people have done should have some weight. I will continue to fight it. I'm used to being told that I'm wrong, so.
What is the objection of the bay residents? Is it the integrity of the bay or is it the traffic?
Yes.
Oh, we both, yeah.
I would say though, that while the people that live right in the vicinity, there are hundreds on my side, my district, we had tremendous overwhelming support, like everyone that was asked said that they want access.
Nobody asked.
On our side of the lake would like access to downtown.
Sure.
We want, I mean, my district wants access to downtown.
Normally, you like people all saying in harmony and perfect harmony.
But I'm saying right now, like, yes, I understand there's opposition of people who don't want people in, don't want to look at, don't want to share. But our side of the lake tremendously overwhelmingly would like access to downtown from the lake.
What that means though is they would also have access to downtown. Hours that the Parks Department, the Parks and Rec said they did not want to actually go into that area because they would have to change park rules and people would be using the park after current hours. So there was a lot of other issues on land.
And that's being decided through other means. I mean, it's the hours, anytime, I mean, we're not saying.
Well, if you build a pier there, then people are going to leave a restaurant at midnight or leave Wells Street at 11:00 PM and go down to their boat that is well past park closing hours. And it will not be monitored.
So I think those types of things can be worked out, obviously, the police department.
My bigger concern is the health of the bay and the fact that the bay residents were never consulted. You asked people for whom it would be a benefit and you didn't ask people for whom it would be a deterrent.
There was plenty of opportunity for public input.
They would beg to differ, both Phil and I, there are constituents.
We've all seen many of them come and participate.
Yes, and their voices are not being heard.
The 1993 Downtown Development Plan has clearly documented the need for the city to provide access in St. John's Bay to the downtown area. This isn't a new issue. This is an issue that has been requested by the master plan for decades. This is not, this is not a new issue. And I'll remind you that we have signatures that were collected face-to-face, door-to-door of over a hundred and fifty.
On the east side of the lake.
On the lake, a hundred and fifty signatures.
How many on the bay? Zero, zero. You did not talk to one bay person. We had the gun club here last time. The one thing that guy did when he came up with a solution was he talked to the peoples whose properties were along the gun club and he came up with a solution. That's not what happened.
When you look at the totality of the lake, there's a clear need, a clear desire to have access to downtown. Five slips of which there's already two there today that are used as part of the St. John's pier that's there.
And you're going to rent them.
We're talking a very incremental number. There's over a hundred and twenty-five boat slips already in St. John's Bay. And we're talking about less than two percent addition. I just ask you to take that into consideration as you deliberate.
Those are, I guess in my opinion, those are reasonable points and compelling. My concern though is if they're so compelling, why do the two older people who represent the bay object to it? And that's, I have a hard time imposing development rules, pass whatever it is on a particular area when the representatives of that area oppose it. And it's not just one representative, it's both of them.
And I appreciate that, Mac, because that's real similar to the support that I believe people on the east side of the lake got with the castle development. That was not desired by the people in that neighborhood and as a result, that's, that didn't go anywhere.
That didn't really affect anybody else though. I mean, that wasn't, that wasn't.
Oh, no, the people around that were vehemently opposed to it because it would.
Right, but you didn't have people on the other side of the, you didn't have other people in the community adamantly for it. I mean, you're comparing that, that is not a fair comparison when you're saying.
Well, I don't think that needs to be compared, but we're talking about people on the lake.
Yeah, but you have a very small group that opposes this and a very large group that is in support of this. And I get, I really do understand that it is the people that are immediately around it that are opposed to it. But you have the majority, there is a much greater group sampling of people who are in favor of this than who are opposed to it.
You have a hundred and fifty people, but five slips, how are you gonna, how are you gonna give a hundred and fifty people five slips?
We just want access.
Doesn't even make sense.
If there is such a huge majority, why do the two representatives of that area oppose it? Why aren't there constituents pounding on their door and saying, "I support this"?
Because they don't. The people that live right there don't support it. I get that. I, I, I mean, I'm saying that, but I also.
Go ahead, go ahead, hon, no worries.
But, and I am not saying that it might not obstruct their view. It might, I mean, we've heard arguments that it would obstruct their view, it would, they don't want to deal with the traffic. But this is a, I mean, the benefit that this would give to the other, to the other people on the lake, it would benefit the lake. It would benefit the people who live on the lake, all over the lake.
With the exception of the bay.
With the exception of the bay, but that is, that is true of any of, I mean, any project.
Have you been in the bay watching people come and go and launch boats off of Bleecker Street Boat Ramp? It's, the people are queued in coming and going.
Need substantial traffic that's all around.
Don't tell us.
Having, having people that come down and stay in downtown for four hours and leave would not be a big change.
I think it'd be a different discussion if it was at Bleecker Street.
Pardon me?
The discussion would be different if the boat.
You want to put, you want to put a dock there? I'd support it.
It's three hundred feet away.
Yes.
And then.
And that's a critical three hundred feet.
And from an environmental standpoint, people along the north side of St. John's Bay, when we were talking about dredging,
were all in favor of it until the DNR said they couldn't. So this environmental thing about protecting this fish habitat is very conditional upon whether it benefited them or not.
I don't think you're, I think you're confusing two viewpoints. There are two groups. The people who own property on the bay do not support it. They, I'm not talking about dredging. The DNR does not support dredging from an environmental perspective.
I'm talking about the people on the bay who wanted, who were all signed up, ready to lock arms and go into the dredging, going back 12 years in the bay until they were told they couldn't. Then they're like, "We want out of the dredging because we can't dredge our own bay." They wanted to. They wanted to. So they wanted to kill all the fish back down.
Let me put it to you this way. I have supported and I do support dredging. I get zero.
In the bay, in St. John's Bay?
No, no.
Well, they did.
Just let me finish. It's not, what I'm saying is that I can support things that don't directly benefit my constituents. The constituents to a person around this whole bay do not support this. And they have been calling me, emailing me, knocking on my door, speaking to me. They have been here before this council on many occasions and I think they're a bit incredulous. I am too, that it keeps coming up. And we're told, you know, that this is so critical that we have to make a decision to benefit five boats.
I'll just, I'll just note that this came, this came into the budget last year for the first time and there was opposition because it was 12 or 13 or 14, I don't know how many.
Twelve.
And we're asked to revisit it. Lake Welfare came back with a recommendation this year with, for six boat slips.
Lake Welfare was not real enthusiastic, if I recall, about it and it was not unanimous.
And there's a, so we're increasing the number, we're increasing public access to downtown via the lake by four boats from what we have now. I just, I think that's.
Is that a public, is one of them a public dock?
They all are, aren't they? Aren't they all deemed to be?
No, I thought the whole idea, if you do public, you're gonna have a whole lot more than five boats going back and forth, looking to see if one's open.
I think.
What is the purpose? So let me, so are these being rented out?
No.
Current count was.
These are all public access for people to come across the lake to visit downtown.
One was being corrected, if I'm wrong.
Right now, there's, right now, there's two spots. One of them's St. John's, one of them's a secret. And now there's gonna be six.
I don't think it's a funny thing, you know.
Well, one of them is there and it's, it's public property, but, so we're going from two to, two to six.
It's a very small area. I have walked it, I have photographed it and I've spoken to the people who live along it. And it has, I know we don't care or we, it's not to worry about, but there are, there are living things there that spawn, that grow. There are lily pads that are endangered species. We have all of this stuff. And it all doesn't matter because we have people who want to go downtown five months of the year, six months of the year when the water is open. But I think, you know, I know your mind is made up, so I'm not sure what else to say other than I'm very disappointed.
I didn't, I didn't like the, I didn't like the 12-slip plan. This one seems very, somewhat innocuous and a decent compromise and a way to give a benefit that doesn't exist to people with heartland addresses that go out to eat there instead of downtown Delafield.
If I can ask another question in between, it's related to this topic, but regards the debt service, and I'm kind of curious, I'm looking at more things besides just this pier and not for just this year, but Tom was just wondering, it looks like starting in 2024, we will start to have probably record high tax rates for at least the past decade or two and then we'll max out at 2028, at least for the debt service. I would imagine the operating budget would probably not be any different. That's not gonna go down. So I have a concern if the debt service is going to be increasing at a time that we may or may not, and I think may, need to do a second referendum. I'm really concerned about additional, taking on additional debt service.
Just remember that every dollar debt service goes up, our levy limit goes up.
The total levy goes up, correct?
The levy limit.
Right. To accommodate.
If debt service goes up a dollar.
Right.
Levy limit goes up a dollar. If debt service goes down a dollar, levy limit goes down a dollar.
Right. It's our operating that's locked in by the state, right?
Second on the pier, correct?
What is that?
So our debt service is not limited by the state. We could take on as much debt as we wanted to.
Correct.
Well, with some limit. So I understand that that would increase, that would go up and down.
We have a motion and a second on the pier, so can we try to stay on that topic until we go to a new one?
Okay. I will just add then that I would have a second reason for not voting on the pier because it's an amenity for a limited number of people. And I think we really need to watch very closely the debt service. Point made. So that's it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye to remove the pier.
Aye.
Aye.
Who had the, Grimmer, Cassin and Valdi?
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Mayor's opposed.
So that doesn't approve? So it's still in?
Still in. Next item for the capital budget?
There was also, I realize it won't be a popular thing, but I'm not sure. Tom, can you just tell me if I'm reading the tables wrong on page 21 of the budget? Is that prediction? Is my understanding of the prediction correct, that the debt service in 2028 will be at a high?
Yes, we've anticipated that ever since the municipal building borrowing in 2009.
And municipal buildings would be paid off in 2029, so we're also, okay. I'm just concerned that when we have to go back to referendum, which is likely, there's some development, but is it enough? That it's also gonna be the same time when tax fees will be at the highest they've been at in Delafield, if ever. So that's my concern. So actually, I would, I would like to, I don't want to see it, but the basketball courts and the pickleball courts at sixty thousand dollars, I know it's not much, but I'm also even not sure about the fifty thousand dollars for the engineering cost with the band shell. We're looking at taking on something more than a band shell, which would be fabulous and great, but I really think we're getting into business at that point. And if we're gonna build something larger, we need to have more of a business plan for it. I'd love to see it happen. My family's totally invested in the arts, so I'd love it. But looking at the debt service, there's three items there that I'd like to consider taking out of the budget.
So is that a motion?
Do you want to do them all? I'd suggest doing them one at a time.
Okay.
I'll, I'll move to remove the pickleball court from the budget.
Are you kidding me?
I'm just curious.
I'll second it.
Oh my God, that has been so, back me on this, Tim. That's been huge.
So I'll just make that motion and then let's discuss it.
Seconded.
So, quick question, is it, is it, is it a pickleball court? Because they're, they're small.
Two.
Because that's half a tennis court. We're gonna do grading engineering to put in a, what is it, a 30 by 60-foot foundation for? Why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we look at something grander as a part of a bigger scheme? Like maybe, maybe a tennis, maybe, maybe two tennis courts. No, like maybe two tennis courts.
The thing about pickleball.
That are striped to do both?
No.
And maybe have schedules for both? I, I just think that, I mean, we put off putting down Crush Rock in that park for two years because it cost 30 grand, just to provide access for people to walk their dogs and now use the Frisbee Golf. And what is the pickleball court going for? Is it?
Sixty-five?
It's, seems like a luxury item to me for such a small pedestal. I mean, that is a small footprint item.
The impetus behind pickleball is that it is incredibly popular. And when compared to tennis, and not to say that tennis isn't popular, but there is passion, as the older woman to my left has expressed, there's a lot of passion, a lot of interest in pickleball. And it had a lot of support on Park and Rec. I don't oppose necessarily being budget-minded, but, and, and looking at this as an opportunity to cut capital. But that's all I'll say. I'm undecided on how I will vote on this motion, but I just would represent what Park and Rec, what their thoughts were behind pickleball.
I'll just follow up by saying, I, my understanding is you can get four in a tennis court. And I'm a little bit surprised that, I mean, the idea of expanding Oakwood Park into something grander has been on the table for a very, very, very long time. And this seems like such a, such a small incremental add without a larger plan in mind that I've been made aware of at a reasonably high price, kind of isolated from walking and there's not even a bike path that goes there. I mean, it is, it is a drive-to destination for something smaller than this room. And I'm just, that's, I'll leave it at that.
Those are valid points.
If this is such a public interest piece, is it, could we suggest an opportunity for some fundraising and community involvement to raise the funds for this versus this coming out of our budget?
I don't know. We can spend 60 grand on a pier for five boats. We could spend money for a pickleball court that would serve a whole lot more people more often. I actually, I guess I should have shared the articles that were sent to me by some of the people. I don't play pickleball. I don't, but I have. I don't, but I have constituents who are avid players, and they don't understand why Delafield doesn't have pickleball courts. They actually were wishing there were four instead of two. So, I don't know. The enthusiasm, and it's a sustained thing. As our population ages, it is a game that doesn't go out of style, but it's very popular with younger players as well. If you've been around Milwaukee, I've been on the river, and you can see people on the tennis courts playing pickleball, converting them to tennis courts. So, it is not like a stupid thing, or, you know, I don't think it should be relegated to.
Well, I don't think anybody was calling it a stupid thing, or just trying to figure out the cock.
I'd rather pay for a tennis court that's striped for both.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, yeah, I don't think anybody was.
You do, you can.
Can you convert a pickleball for a tennis court to a pickleball court?
You can do them, you can't play them at the same time. That would be a little raucous. But a tennis court can be striped for both, and you could set up hours of operation and do both. I'd be all for doing it for Bostrom Park. We have one tennis court in the city. We should put another one, we should put another tennis court on the other side of the lake, or maybe two, and double stripe them. Just a thought. I'd rather see that thought put into it, maybe put it off a year and spend double or triple to make it something that's a stamp to last, and dedicated.
I'll direct my calls to you then.
I've gotten lots, but.
There's also.
I'm not beliving the game. I think it's a great sport.
It would be great to have.
Love to see one right downtown, too.
Yeah, it would be great to have. I'm just looking at it from a dollar point of view and trying to look at where we'll be in a few years. And there might even be some tennis courts. I know there's some unused tennis courts that change on St. John's right now, right near the golf course. So, that could be investigated.
Well, I think your point is also valid about the location, that it is somewhat isolated. Not that Oakwood Park is isolated, but it is a drive-to destination.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the pickleball courts.
Exciting.
All in favor of?
All in favor to remove them?
To remove the pickleball courts from the capital budget, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Extentions? Pickleball court is removed.
So, just have Valdi and Baron, so just have Valdi and Baron on the nay? Is that correct?
Correct.
I would also, okay, thank you. I'd like to make a motion then to remove the leveling and surfacing of the basketball courts with new hoops for $35,000. Remove that from the budget as well.
Is there a second?
This is.
For a discussion, we need a second.
I'll second for discussion purposes.
So, these are existing courts that need to be resurfaced and maintained, correct? Or restored, correct?
Yeah.
One existing court at Farman's Park.
It's just one court?
Yes.
It is heavily used.
Okay.
And I'll attest to the fact that it is in very rough condition with lots of cracks in it, and just the treatment of the weeds that come out of the cracks is a DPW maintenance effort.
Is it unsafe, or close to being unsafe, or trips and falls?
I would say by the nature of the cracks, that it would be a, certainly, if I was playing on those courts, tripping would be a concern.
Yeah, I think Farman's Park is an older park that is heavily supported, and we shouldn't have our stuff looking like junk there.
Yeah, if you look at the.
If the recommendation of staff is that we fix it, we should fix it.
It wasn't from staff. This came from Park and Rec. But it's also new basketball goals, too. And if you look at the backboards and the poles there, they're rusting. They're in rough shape, and you don't see courts like that in too many municipalities.
And it is, as Tom indicated, in others, it's very frequently used.
All righty, is there any other discussion? All in favor of not resurfacing the tennis courts, say aye.
Basketball court.
I'm sorry, basketball court?
Aye.
Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Extentions? Passes. Remains in the budget. Any question on the board?
I do, actually. So.
So, that didn't pass, right?
Yeah, we have.
That didn't pass.
It did not pass.
It remains in the budget.
Yeah. You said passes, it did not pass.
Yes, yes.
Did not pass, it remains in the budget.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I'd also like to have a discussion. So, I will make a motion to remove the $50,000 for the engineering conceptual design, site planning investigation of the Liberty Park Band Shell.
Of the what? Could you speak up, please?
The Liberty Park Band Shell.
I will second.
Wait, you want to remove the money?
Correct. Well, I wanted to have a discussion about it. I started to indicate a little bit of my concern at the meeting, the workshop that we had, because every place that I can think of, whether it's even the swimming pool at Arrowhead, the South Shore Civic Center, which is, all of these places, the Mullitt Center at Arrowhead High School, all of these places have some kind of a partnership with some kind of an organization for funds. If we were building something smaller, that was just a small band shell, I would be more inclined, be more inclined to just go along with this. But $500,000 is the anticipated expense in two years to build it, and my concern is adding to the overall debt again at a time when we may have to do another referendum. So, that is my concern, and I'm just, I wonder if anybody's got any comments about?
I'd say when.
We're getting into business.
I'm in support of the project. The timing is awkward. I'd say that certain dynamics of the economy and what's happened in the past, two years have, and I'm not saying that, it's more along the lines of what's going on in the immediate vicinity of this particular park and this particular project, and that is anything and everything that happens with potential development of the St. John's property, especially with any kind of residential development along the river on the north side there, which we're discussing and the Economic Development Committee actually recommended that we look at that. I would, I'm more in favor of just moving this to the column over one year, from the standpoint of not knowing exactly what opportunities we might be sacrificing with some sort of partnership with a development over there, or if we designed something around any redevelopment of maybe the post office property, or what's going on at St. John's, and it's kind of blighted back there with some of the, they've got work sheds and that right adjacent to it, just to the west. That whole area is subject to a redevelopment plan that we don't know any details about, and we are voting on adopting a different city plan to accommodate potential there, and I'd hate to have it rotated 30 degrees the wrong way, or not available in a land swap for some other opportunity. I just, I'm concerned that this, I support the funding for the project. I just think we're a year early, based on where we're at with St. John's developing the property.
And those are reasonable points. I would be reluctant to have private development drive public development, have, wait for what our private developers and partners say should dictate, should not dictate what we do on public lands. I appreciate that a plan could be more developed, but in all honesty, there really is only one place to put a stage, a band shell, whatever you want to call it. You're not gonna tilt it towards the lake. You're not gonna tilt it towards out west in the woods. It faces the parking lot, essentially. And so, in my mind, that there is, I mean, that's the, it is what it is, and it essentially can't be too different than what it is. The other part of this, to alleviate some of the concerns about economic impact, would be, you know, part of this allocation is towards investigating grant funding and seeing what is out there and available to help support a project like this. Not to mention the mayor's wife.
I know.
The former mayor's wife.
I can't wait till my own family gets ahold of what I said. And I'm not worried about your wife.
You ever, have you met Amy?
She's a wonderful woman. My daughter's a performance cellist, so, yeah. So, there's two things regarding business, and I just want to clarify that. I think the first thing I was mentioning was a business plan to have an idea of how to make a go of it, and make it more sustaining, supported, to make it a bigger thing.
What does that mean, though? What impractical, what do you mean by? Because in terms of, you mean operationalizing it?
Correct.
So, right now, the opera, that word I just said. The operationalizing of it is gonna be spearheaded by the Delafield Arts Foundation and by promotion and tourism. And we have promotion and tourism. Delafield Arts has PNT's support, and has had their support.
And I believe that probably.
I would also mention that this was, when we went around our big roundtable of the Economic Development Committee, there were a few things that came out of that. One of them that had significant support was a stage, a band show, a city center. You have over 300 signatures, which is more signatures than I can recall for any particular project, or almost 300 signatures. 30-plus businesses. You know, we talk about, Jim mentioned the, you know, the Lapham Peak development of putting, you know, a ski lodge there. That's gonna put people in hotels. I would venture to say that a project like this would put people in hotels as well.
So, I'm not saying let's not do it. What I'm saying is.
Well, your motion says let's not do it.
This year, correct?
No.
This year. So, you know, I think if you look at the Sherlin-Wilson Center in Brookfield, that's what I'm looking for. I'm not looking to build something that big.
You're gonna have to add a zero to that 500,000, though.
So, no, but that's all I'm saying. Is some kind of another plan laid out, because maybe it's out there, but I haven't seen the plans on who will actually take care of that. I don't want, we don't have enough people in the city at DPW to start managing things there. We don't have people in the clerk's office to start booking things. That's what we want to do, though, is book these things, and who's gonna run it, how's it gonna be run? And are we gonna actually build it to what they need? That's all I'm saying, is developing more of a plan on paper, putting it off one year, we'll know a lot of things in a year. And I'm not suggesting that we wait until the St. John's is developed. No, not at all. But we could also have talks with them to see what we could do. Just want to make sure it's done right. We didn't take the Oakwood Path. We didn't put that in last year because we needed a bike plan. We've got a bike plan now. So, we waited one year, figured it out.
Some of this money is needed to do some of that work.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
So, I have a lot of concerns that both of you have, and it's, I think, somewhat of a tough decision. But for me, at the end of the day, I think we need to get started. And I think some of those details can be worked out. And this $50,000 really is gonna put a stake in the ground for getting those other plans and other things, other funding and other things started. I think we just continue to spin our wheels till we make a commitment like this for a design and.
How much did we spend on the bike path plan when we were done?
That's a great question, Mr. Baron. What did we allocate to that? Mr. Hefner, 25,000?
25,000. I bet you we didn't even spend 5,000.
We didn't even spend 5,000, so.
Let's do that. So, the more we allocate, the more.
Well, where there's a will, there's a way. We will try.
I guess the only reason I bring it up is I know how this, this government works, is we're not gonna go and spend that 50,000, but would we spend eight grand, maybe? And then it's a placeholder that goes out. You know, it ends up being bonded this year, but it may be three or four years before you go through that budget. And I know we're not looking to put this whole thing on the taxpayers. And that's, this is, it's almost like the thing at Lapham Peak Park. If we can't get a good chunk of this money privately in the end, it's gonna be a difficult sell.
And I agree with that.
You know, I think it's probably more money than that 500,000.
Could be, could be. I mean, it depends on what the city wants.
But I also think if we approve this, and I'm gonna support leaving it in the budget, a year from now, I bet we won't have spent 15 or 20 of it. And then in '23, we're still gonna be tapping it.
Well, I made this motion to have a discussion, and that's what we had. So, that was my goal, because I had concerns about it, and they're not alleviated, but I wanted to make sure that it was discussed, so.
And they're reasonable.
Are there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to remove, correct?
To remove.
To remove.
Aye.
Those opposed? You're an aye?
That was two ayes.
Okay, two ayes.
Sorry.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Extentions? Remains in the budget. Motion fails.
So, I have one more. Are you done? Do you have any more? Okay. I would like to discuss the dredging amount. I would like to, do I need to make a motion to discuss it first? Do we need to make a motion to discuss it?
That would be vast.
To change it? Okay, so I would like to make a motion to adjust the amount on the dredging from 185,000 to 265,000, and I'd like to.
What was the?
265,000. And I'd like to discuss it because I think this.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, to discuss it. Okay, thank you. And I want to explain this because this has gotten to a point, this has been neglected for so many years, that it's gotten to the point where it is just, it's a navigable, it's a hazard, and I know that this $185,000 was put in there to basically chop off the top of a dome that has been, an island that has been created there, and make it navigable again. It doesn't solve the problem, and I know, Phil, you discussed that the sewer pack suggestion was to make changes upstream so that we can try to reduce the sediment coming down. That doesn't address the sediment that's already there. So, while I am absolutely in support of doing that, and I think that's being worked on, and I hope we can find a solution for that, a lot of that is out of our control because it's not in the city of Delafield, and we don't own the land. And in the meantime, that sediment is still coming down, and chopping off the top of it isn't gonna solve the issue of it continuing to build up. So, until we get that other, the other process in place to stop the sediment or reduce the sediment from coming down, it's just gonna continue to accumulate there. This proposal for $185,000 is expected to maybe last 10 years, hopefully, before it's back to where it is now. The reason I'm asking for an increase right now is because the cost of the equipment and the engineering and to do the project is the same if we do it, I mean, every time we do it, we're gonna have to pay those setup costs, and it's a huge undertaking. It is really a big deal for the community to bring in that equipment, to tear up and restore it. Any additional funds that we put towards this right now is just bringing it down and gives us longer before we would have to do this again if we can't get that stuff in place. So, the reason I came up with the 265,000 is because according to these calculations, and again, it's just rough estimates, but his calculation of the $35 per cubic yard. but his calculation of the $35 per cubic yard would give another three feet of depth. Right now, he's aiming his... This proposal is requesting a depth of six feet. Adding an extra $80,000 on there would just be more... I mean, would purely be going towards removing another three, average of three cubic yards of depth there.
In the same area?
In the same area. And the deeper you go, the longer it's going to be until that fills back in and more time that we would have to implement these processes to reduce the sediment. The bay that was done, I mean, Zastro Bay...
What processes are you referring to to decrease the sediment?
There... I mean, Phil would be able to speak to that better than I could as far as that... But they're talking about reducing the sediment that's going into the river that's coming down into...
Upstream.
Yeah, upstream. I mean, that would be the recommendation of Sura Pak is to find ways to reduce the sediment coming down.
Why haven't we done that 10 years ago? Dredging has been on the agenda for since forever.
It's impractical.
It's hard, yes.
Well, part of this...
What's our expectation that we'll be able to do that now when we haven't been successful at doing it in the past?
But I would say, little history, the Lake Country Compact resulted in a huge improvement in our lake. And not that there isn't more that can be done, but Hartland implemented on a retrofit basis in those industrial parks, all sorts of retention and detention facilities because of that contract. Now, that was in the newer areas, but the lake has improved greatly. But that doesn't mean that this thing isn't a problem and it won't continue to...
And I support 185,000. I think it's time and I think the evidence presented here is very compelling. And so, I have... But I support that the dredging as described in the budget. I just... I have to wrap my head around another...
The reason that I want... I would encourage you to consider adding more is because any more that we add to it right now is purely taking that sediment away. Whereas if we have to repeat this in 10 years... I mean, this is almost... That my 185 is one and a half times what has already been proposed, which would likely last us much longer than that. Where if we have to repeat this every 10 years, that $25,000 to $50,000 that we have to put towards engineering would have to be repeated every 10 years versus if we put $80,000 into it more, it might drive... It might be 20 years before we have to repeat the process.
Would you concur with her analysis, Tom?
What she's referring to is fixed mobilization costs and permitting fees and design. And that's going to incur every time you have to do this and that's a significant cost.
So, is this going to be a donut hole at this spot? Is that what we're doing? Instead of six feet, we go on eight feet?
It's not. It's going to... Well, it's going to aver... I mean, it's going to take away as much as we can from that area so that the sediment coming in has someplace to go before it builds back up to an island again.
The natural course of a river going into a lake that's dammed up is to form a river delta, the mouth of the river that is the inlet. That's what happens. There's nothing that's going to stop it. I mean, putting sediment traps in the river, if you've seen what those look like, I mean, when we talk about destroying natural habitat, that will do it.
Do you know it would be highly unlikely for them to...
No, they're really, really disruptive. They put big wells in S-curves on the river going in. But the natural evolution of a dammed-up, man-made lake reservoir is deltas at the river inlet. I mean, I spent an inordinate amount of time on the dredging committee when I started as alderman back when I did and saw it happen on other lakes. And it's very unfortunate that the DNR dropped their funding of dredging for navigable water access to lakes because it used to be a staple of their funding and they killed it. And I'll use a number again. They put somewhere between 3,500 and 5,000 boats on this lake a year and they don't want to give us a nickel to dredge. And it's a state park. And we're probably the largest, most populous lake in the state that doesn't have a lake management... Oh, what is it?
Lake District.
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 We are the district. I've always argued against...
The district is sitting right here in this room. Why do you put that on my resume?
But, I mean, like districts, they're a taxing entity that layers on top of the existing one and is grabbing people that don't always want to be a part of it. And you can draw those districts. So, I don't want to get into... That's a different discussion that's pretty nasty. But it's an environmental maintenance issue that's very specific to the people who are residents of the lake. Just like everyone who buys any property in the city has their own environmental management issues of their own property, whether it's erosion or what happens to their trees or whether it's deer or whatever else. It's just if you're on a lake, yours are more unique than... Yours are unique to lake. So, this is... This one's tricky for me. You know, I was talked off the ledge of being in support of it by a lot of people that I'm close to. But, you know, I'll just say that, how can I do this? I'm against the citywide taxpayer funding across the board as a matter of the capital budget for dredging. Just laying a formula over all taxpayers and having them pay for it. But I agree with you that you should exploit... If you're going to do it, you have to exploit the money and the effort that's upfront for the engineering costs and the amount of infrastructure you need to do it. I would say get the most bang for your buck, even though I'm going to vote against either of them. I don't know. Does that make any sense? You can interpret it however you will. But if you're going to spend money I don't want to spend, you should get the most efficient use out of it, is my point.
When was the last time this was dredged by the... This private funding, privately funded dredging?
It was...
I guess my question is, where do we get the 10-year estimate from?
Okay, so the residents invested over $400,000 to dredge along the shoreline in, I believe it was, I want to say it was 2000...
I was on common council.
Yeah, it wasn't that long ago.
So, it wasn't that long? It was not 10 years?
I think it was 2013.
13 to 14, yeah.
It was in there. However, the issue with that was the mound, the island that was there is... It was never addressed. That was not dredged. It was just along the shoreline.
They couldn't be permitted to do it as private citizens, correct? Or is that...
No, well, I mean, they could have, but their argument was they were putting out... I just had the sheet, but X number of tens of thousands of dollars. And it was like $25,000 or $22,000 per property owner for 30 property owners and they just couldn't afford to do that center. They had always hoped that the city would do the center. At the same time, they did the perimeter, which would have been the perfect marriage. And unfortunately, at the time, the city chose not to participate in and do the center like we're talking about today and they went ahead and did their shoreline.
I also think that to take into consideration when the city supports the citizens in this way, too, the citizens are vested in taking care of the lake. They really are. The areas that did get dredged, I mean, their area that got dredged and Zastro Bay that got dredged, the residents really do commit to keeping it nice, getting the weeds and the leaves out of the lake so that doesn't turn into more muck in there. So, this... Having the city support this now and showing them that we are also committed to taking care of the lake, and this is maintenance. This isn't... I mean, this is at the point now where... Well, it isn't even maintenance at this point because it's been neglected for so long. It needs to be done. It isn't a matter of whether or not we should do it. It has to be done. It has to. It has to be done because it is unsafe and unavocable.
Yeah, but the question isn't... Well, maybe the question is, but your motion doesn't say it has to be done. Your motion says it has to be done plus three feet.
And I'm asking for an extra three feet because if we're going to do it, which it needs to be done, I'd like to get the most out of it so that we don't need to... We have more time before we would need to repeat it.
Well, who proposed this amount? And why didn't they ask for more?
The Lake Welfare Committee.
Yeah, so Parks and Rec requested it and the reason that they...
Parks and Rec?
Well, I'm sorry, Lake Welfare. I'm sorry. Lake Welfare requested it. The reason that they requested that it is only this amount is because it had... They had requested initial... I mean, they've requested it year after year after year for 400,000, for 500,000, and it always got turned down. And at this point now, this is the absolute minimum that would make it safe. So, that's why it's this amount now. But every additional dollar that would go into it right now would be to remove the sediment. So, if we're going to do it, which it needs to be done, I believe we should get the most that we can out of it.
I would... Yeah.
Versus spending $50,000 on the engineering and the setup every 10 years.
I will say the $50,000 for engineering, we're not certain how much that will be, which is why it was written, anything not used towards engineering would go towards the actual removal of silver.
But that will have to be done every time.
That is true. At the same time, it should last...
In preliminary discussions, we don't believe that engineering will likely exceed $25,000.
Okay.
So, that money would go towards the actual dredging, then?
But every 10 years versus if we did it, this could last much longer, especially with the support of the residents taking care of the shorelines and their contribution.
Tom, can I ask a procedural question? Is it possible to add basically $80,000 to a budget item at this point? Or is that something that would actually have been necessary for a public hearing?
No, you can add or subtract to the budget.
Okay.
Council's purview.
All right, is there any other discussion?
What's the motion?
To increase the amount from $185,000 to 265,000.
As much as I'd like to concur with that, I, again, based on the debt payments we'll be making, I... At this point, I couldn't support increasing that. So, that's my position.
Bill, wasn't there some discussion back and forth at Lake Welfare Committee to target in on a final number? Didn't they go back and forth on a few different numbers?
They started with actually a lower number and it was actually advised... Mike Hausman actually came up with some initial numbers. I think it was a low one, like 135. And people said, "Well, let's go for two." And then they said, "Let's go for just under two because that seemed like a more manageable number." So, that was what Lake Welfare decided was to go under 185 in order to get it passed.
It's more politically.
Yeah, it had nothing to do with the actual...
They caught me.
All right, is there any other discussion? Hearing not, and all in favor, say aye.
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 Henry, Barron and Grimmer.
Opposed?
Nay.
How did you vote, Jackie?
I said no. I'm not comfortable increasing it. I'm happy to support the dredging, but not by that large amount of increase.
So, we have a tie and the mayor votes aye.
So, you vote to increase the dredging?
I vote to increase the dredging.
Well, any motion I may make to eliminate it is probably moot, so I will not... I will refrain. But I will move on to the Fish Hatchery Building, the roof project.
Can we just... I just want to make sure I have this count right. So, I have other person Henry, other person Iker.
No.
No.
Barron and Grimmer.
And Henry.
And Henry.
All voted for.
All right, I would like to remove the $250,000 for the replacement of the Fish Hatchery Building roof and leave the $25,000 in for possible maintenance and...
Wait, we're willing to spend an extra 80 grand on dredging, but we're not willing to do what needs to be done to a historic building?
There was no me in that "we."
I said "we." I said "we." I didn't say "you."
Let me back up and get the motion.
Yeah, so my motion is to remove the $250,000 to replace the roof in 2022 on the Fish Hatchery Building and leave the $25,000 in for maintenance and repair of what is in need of repair in the short term.
So, reprogramming the $25,000 from engineering to maintenance?
Correct.
I'll second that.
Of course.
And I'll just say, it's about as old as the roof in my house. It's about three years older than the roof that's on my house. And when it was done in around '95 to '97, it was done with fundraising and grants. And I don't know that either of those were explored for this project. And I don't know that a 27-year-old roof needs to be... Or a 24-year-old roof needs to be replaced tomorrow. I'm not an engineer. I wasn't on the roof, but you should get 25 to 30 years off of one of those roofs. And I think we need to assess exactly what can be done to see if there's any... I know there's no leaks right now, according to what I've been told. And I'd just like to know that I think we can get by for a couple of years, in my opinion. Again, anecdotal, but I think it's practical not to jump into what was proposed here because I don't know that we've vetted all the other possibilities.
Did we not...
So, we did have a contractor who would do the work, come out and take a look at the roof. And while they say it's to be... They'd like to see it replaced and be awarded the contract to do so, they had suggested approximately six or seven years ago that the roof also needed replaced. And we did a detailed inspection from the floor and from the ground and from within the building. We couldn't identify any leaks or any damaged drywall. We did notice that some maintenance would be done for some caulking and a few shingle replacements. While they recommended, you know, that it be changed, there wasn't any reason to believe that it couldn't last another year or two or possibly longer with some minor maintenance.
I would concur very much with what Tim said and that would actually... If it's in two or three years, that would certainly make me more comfortable in trying to avoid what I've been saying all night with the... Avoiding the high tax rate on the debt service that's coming up.
Piggybacking on that, though, the materials will just cost more.
I don't know. We're in a pretty big supply shortage at this moment.
Yes, you are. It's not funny. None of this is funny to me.
We are, mentally.
And Tom, I think we'd asked for a quote for repairs and I think it was closer to 15,000, actually, is what they thought, verse five.
I wasn't aware.
So, yeah, I did talk to them in anticipation that this might be something that comes up. And their initial response was that they didn't want to provide a quote to us because they didn't think a Band-Aid fix was appropriate any longer and that it was in need of replacement. After talking it through with them and encouraging them that the city may likely consider some maintenance as opposed to replacement, they did take a look at it again. They said that the, you know, the amount of work that they would recommend, it's in need of some tuck pointing with some masonry, but they wouldn't... They didn't recommend that we have a mason come out because of the expense involved with that. So, they thought that they would... It would take two guys and a week and renting a lift for a week and that would give them enough time to get up there and replace the missing shingles and primarily seal up everything as far as masonry cracking and some of the potential leak points and valleys and stuff that just using a sealant on that. But that they... They said that that would... They estimated $10,000 to $20,000 and then kind of zeroed in at the $15,000 number. But they said, "Don't expect five years out of that. That's more like a one or two-year type of fix."
So, would it make more sense to push it out a year and not just simply remove it?
It has to be... I mean, according to that assessment, it has to be done eventually. And so, are we putting... Investing in a Band-Aid instead of just cutting off the arm?
That's the concern. And there's shingles missing now, you know, a fair amount of shingles missing. So, something should be done. And just, you know, with a high-pitched roof like that, it's just expensive just to mobilize the crew and the lift just to be able to get up on the roof. And so, kind of similar to the dredging, every time you come out there, mobilization is significant.
So, we've got... Since I seconded, can I ask to amend that to change to... Just to move it to next year, including the repairs this year, but moving it to next year? Or including... So that we can revisit it next year if it needs to be...
I'm assuming in the natural course of things, it would just show up in next year's budget.
But if we make an overt statement... If we make an overt statement of putting it next year, it's much more...
I agree.
it's much more supportive because that's what I've learned.
Essentially the intent of my motion, so I'm happy to amend it to say.
Thank you.
We're putting it off a year and using the 25 grand, possibly as much as that to.
To repairs.
To handle any kind of replacement, repairs we need in the interim.
So I certainly support that.
Can I get a second on the amendment?
You two just agreed during.
Yeah, so we agree, so that's, yeah.
All right.
I'm sitting here and thinking, 275,000 and we put the last roof on 23 years ago. So you're at 10,000 to 15,000 a year.
It's a historical building. It's not, it's the centerpiece. We use it all the time in our promotional pieces. It's not just, you know, forgive me, my house or anybody else's house. It's a, it's a significant structure, probably one of the most architecturally interesting buildings in the city. And we certainly don't want to ignore that.
I'm just, I don't have a problem spending money to push it a year or two. So I'm in agreement with that. I question the total amount, I just.
Isn't it because of the shingles?
And I went through this with my fraternity house in Madison and I know it was, it was a quarter million dollars. It's an 8,000 square foot building. My, my house is 4,000 and it was 14 grand.
Well, I'm also asking for the simple exploration into what's available to, as far as a grant for maintaining something that's on the, you know.
It is on the register, right?
National Historical Register.
And that, so is my fraternity.
This is more important to me than your frat house.
I'll just, I'll just remind you that, just be careful how we use this historical meaning, right? There's many aspects of that building that are not historical. For example, we learned that lesson on the windows, right?
Roof.
The assumption was all their historical windows, well, actually in this, whatever it was, the 60s or the 70s, they were all replaced with modern windows for the time, albeit they would, right? So they didn't need to be replaced with true historical windows because they had long since gone away.
If you talk to some of the people who were a part of the group that helped restore the fish hatchery, that roof is historical and that's what makes it so expensive.
No, no, it's asphalt.
We just replaced it.
The original roof was terracotta. And these are, the roofs, the roof that's on there now is asphalt shingles.
Doesn't look like it, but they are.
Is that where we're getting for 250,000 terracotta, as we should? At that price?
No, we're getting, we're getting shingles that are three times expensive as the normal asphalt shingles. They're a historic replica that are meant to give off the look of a slate roof, even though this building never had a slate roof. That's what was chosen at the time of the renovation. And, you know, I asked the question, you know, if we went down from this historic slate roof-looking asphalt shingle down to just a regular asphalt shingle, what does that save us? Because, you know, I thought, hey, it's three times as expensive. Most of this cost is in the labor. And going down from the slate-looking shingles down to regular asphalt shingles would save us $10,000. Going down from copper gutters to galvanized gutters would save us another $10,000. So those are the types of things we did look into to try to save some money. But it, those upgrades, when you're spending so much on the labor, it makes sense to use good materials.
Well, it's an expensive time to build as well.
Yeah.
So I would.
Well, as far as expensive, the quote we received for the same work in 2015 was $196,000 and now it's $242,000. So I don't know that that's all that far off from inflation, but probably a little bit higher than inflation.
And we, this is typical, we would put forth a certain amount of money and then we'll go bid it. All right? These are numbers that haven't been competitively bid yet.
So the motion, I'll call the question.
All, yep. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I don't either.
Can you repeat the motion, like?
I have no idea what you're voting on.
Oh, okay, Molly?
So the motion currently is to, I suppose we should vote on the amended motion.
Which was the amendment?
To put off for one year, the original repairs.
And, and have the 25.
And then, so the total motion with the amendment is to remove the $250,000 fish hatchery roof repair in total, but leave in the $25,000 that was set for engineering, for maintenance and repair. And then, but to include, to put off the overall repair or replacement for one year.
Well, I'm confused by that.
I'm sorry, no, right, we're doing the 25,000 this year for repairs and the rest, the replacement would be next year.
Yes, that's what I have.
And did we talk about changing that to 15 or you're leaving it at 25?
There was.
It was left at 25.
It was left at 25.
Okay, are we all clear? Excellent. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Who's next? Any other items in the capital budget? Otherwise we'd be looking for a motion for the capital budget.
We already had.
Oh, we're ready for that? Okay.
I'll move as amended the capital budget.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Good, Molly? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions, passes. All righty. All right, we will move on to 12D, discussion possible action to approve ordinance 784 and ordinance repealing and recreating section 2, 132 of the City of Delphine Municipal Code related to boundaries of the City of Delphine Ward and Alderman Districts per the requirements of Wisconsin Statute Section 5.15 and 62.08 following the decennial federal census.
I'll also move.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. All right, we'll move on to 12E, approval of vouchers payable, reporting dates of 11/2, 2021 to 11/15, 2021, and the amount of $80,025.57 for accounts payable and $73,608.4 for payroll.
I'll also move.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Reports a city official, city administrator.
I just want to point out two items of correspondence on the agenda. The first one is a water system report that's done every two years. It's an inspection that the DNR does and they found our system to be fully and compliant with all require, requirements and indicated a very good record of compliance with monitoring and reporting requirements. So I'd refer you to that. It includes information about water quality and things like that as well and sampling. And then we did hear back from Bob Transon after discussing with him the eyeglass drop box. And after he found out that the city preferred the drop box be inside the lobby and that, that we were only proposing to do it on a one-year trial basis initially, he withdrew his request to have a drop box at the city. And that's all I have for this evening.
Great, city clerk?
Nothing super exciting, just that we are kind of ramping up for the election season. Starting in December, the incumbents and interested candidates can start to circulate your papers and you should expect to see information out on that by the end of the week.
Great, thank you much. City treasurer is here. Any report?
Nope, I'll be next meeting.
You usually have to skip that one, this is unusual.
You're supposed to say we passed the budget.
That is true.
City passed the budget.
It's been my life the last couple of weeks.
Okay, 13D, council request for future agenda item. Hearing none, you can bring them up at any time. All right, I'll refer you to number 14, the correspondence, which Tom already addressed. And I will say that we were adjourned at 9:34 saying no further business.